Well, 6 o'clock, we'll bring this meeting to order. We'll get to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the fighting of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting? Are there any corrections? If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as...
I make a motion.
You have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, have it. Does anybody have any mail? Move right along here. Move on to our county attorney. Mr. O'Callaghan.
I have nothing that needs to be brought up now unless anyone has any questions or concerns that they feel need to be brought up in the meeting.
Questions, concerns from the council? Nope. Take, move on. Two reports. Do we have a commissioner representative? We do not have a commissioner...
Here we do.
He's hiding over there.
He is.
Couldn't see him.
Okay, we've had a few things since your last meeting, at our last meeting. We finalized plans for moving the food pantry. We give them a notice that they need to be out by the 21st of July. We want to use that space over there. We're still having problems with the elevator over there. We fixed it. Spent, I think, thirteen thousand. Now we've got about a thirty thousand dollar bill to fix it again. This is supposed to fix it like new, so hopefully it will. Because an elevator is not hard to be used, but we spent a ton of money on it. Since our last meeting, you probably all know that Bill McDaniel had a fall at home, hurt his knee, and has had to be off work some, which is made of... Things kind of hard. I had people call me wanting to inspect this, and we planned the inspections, and they came down, couldn't find him, couldn't get him on the phone. So, we have contracted with a man on an hourly basis, who Bill recommended can just go out and do the inspections. Do the inspections, report back to Bill, and he's still coming in and coming in here some, working at home some, but he is going to have to have knee surgery probably later this month. So, he's going to have to be off some more. So, that's something that the commissioners of the council need to be thinking about. You had to eliminate the person that worked down there with Bill. It just left one man to do that job. You've got the same thing, one man doing Mark Shirk's job, Roland's job, who inspects the rest, and if any one of those people gets sick, or can't come to work, or go on vacation, you have nobody to do their work. And it's, you know, this is a... We're a kind of a service industry. It's not fair to the public for them to say, "Well, you've got to wait until somebody can come back to work." One thought I have had, instead of funding two people for these positions, was to cross-train those people down there where Bill McDaniel could inspect septic tanks, or Shirk could inspect the resters. I know they don't want to do it, and they've got a full-time job, but on an emergency basis, we need to keep those offices open and them services going. If we could do that, possibly it would just be a cost of training. I mean, if you make these people get trained and certified for this stuff, we'd have to pay for it, but we have to figure out some way that we can keep the doors open in these offices if something... And it just naturally will. People go on vacation, people get sick, and like Bill, they get hurt. So, I think it's something you and the commissioners need to think about, try and come to some agreement on what we might do. Prescription drug program, we had not paid our dues to NACO for that prescription drug program, and I didn't know, I don't think anybody around here knew how much good the community is getting out of that. Debbie had figures of a million-some dollars.
Three, six oh seven. Cost savings to citizens.
From cost savings on prescriptions. That dues was four hundred dollars, so... And they do have a deal where we get a dollar back from each one of those, so we signed up for that again, and hopefully the rebates we get from that, we'll pay for that. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about was the highway garage. We're advertising for bids for the highway garage. Those bids are supposed to be in the ninth of July. We've designed that building. We've cut the building down as low as we can cut it, and cut the cost down as much as we can do it. The highway department is going to do the site work, which is going to be kind of extensive, because like we told you before, that site down there is not a good site to build on. We're going to have to cut nine feet off of one end, off of one end of the building. And then we're still going to have a three-foot step down between the office and the garage and the open part where we have the trucks. And it's also going to mean, when we do that, that building is... Where they've got the building designed in the best place they could find, which like I say, still is not a good place. That building's going to be right up against our old building now, so we're going to have to tear down one or two bays of that so they can get in there to do the dirt work. So, it's going to take some time to do it. We're considering whether we should go ahead and do the dirt work now, and tear off those two bays of the building. The building's going to have to come down because it's condemned, and it's not safe to be in, so one way or another, it's going to have to come down. We don't build a building. We'll have to tear it down, just rent a building, I guess. But I'm confident that the council will see fit where it's going to come in. I don't know if the engineer tells me it's going to be off a tight of six hundred thousand dollars. I would hope that the council, if it comes in for more, would appropriate the additional money and go ahead and get this garage done. We've spent too much money up to this point of getting appraisals done, and soulboards done, and easements bought for the sewer easement, to just throw that money away and not build a garage. So, that's what we thought. Like I said, the commissioners are thinking about having Jay and his crew go ahead and start the work down there. We're going to save quite a bit by having our people do it, and it's the only way we could get even close to getting this building down within budget. I guess you all know that Jay is leaving the 8th of August, so we're in the process of taking applications to get somebody to replace him, which is not going to be easy. That's about all I have. Any questions?
Is the elevator in the annex, is that hydraulic or cable?
Hydraulic.
Hydraulic.
For sure, yeah. And I think the last estimate, we don't have the quote for sure yet, it's going to be around thirty thousand dollars, they thought, after we've already spent thirteen.
What are they doing to it now?
Well, when we fix it this time, you're going to have everything new but the cage.
So, they fixed for thirteen? What did they fix for thirteen?
They put a new shaft, was dented in it, they put a new shaft in it, and when they put that shaft in where the collar, the shaft goes down in, they bent that and...
It was set, somehow when they did some work before, they set something crooked at the pit.
Yeah, it's that collar that goes around the shaft, and when they worked on it, it was cemented in, and now it's copped. So, the only thing to do is take the whole thing, get the whole mess new, and like I said, they're going to have everything new except the car.
So, we don't use it?
We don't use it much, but to be ADA compliant, we're going to have to fix the elevator, whether anybody uses it or not.
Say, pardon? When was that?
Was that their fault that the shaft got bent, the company that worked on it?
Years ago.
Years, that's years ago.
So, that was done years ago.
That was done years ago.
Okay. I just thought maybe recently?
We could get a rebate back now. It's past that.
They were having mid-America elevator, and then switched to having...
The same people that do, that work on this elevator here?
Yeah, the people that do the elevator over here.
Who is doing it now?
And then they were the ones that found that evidently the last one had done, had set that in there right. Vertical Systems is the one that's doing it, and I will tell you, you're going to have to look and try to find where we're going to pay for that. I don't have any appropriation to pay that thirty thousand dollars for a cost sale, so I don't know.
But again, we don't have any choice. We're going through this ADA study now, which is going to give us a report of what we have to do, and but you're going to have to be ADA compliant, or they're going to cut off your grants, so you've got to do one to get the other.
When's this study supposed to be completed?
Here in the next week. They've been waiting on some of our people to get their reports in that they needed, and those are all out now, so... Well, in fact, the 17th, the man is going to be down and give a report the 17th at our next meeting.
Okay, is that the same outfit they did for the city?
Same one.
Strand.
Yes.
I think you're on to something good there about the inspections, because Warren is a licensed engineer, so I think him transitioning and doing those inspections would be very easy for him, how much other work he does.
Well, it will. The only problem there is he is an elected official, and you make an elected official do something besides what he was elected for, I don't know, but the others... The three people that are doing the inspections are our employees, and I know they wouldn't like it probably, but we could put that in their job description. It seems to me to get them qualified, and I'm just talking about on an emergency basis with somebody sick or on vacation or what, you know? Okay. Any questions?
Anybody else have anything for Commissioner Barker?
Hey, comments on my garage?
Your garage? Okay. Next up, we'll hear committee reports. Shirley, did you have anything to report on today?
I handed to the three committee members on the wage and salary, or wage and budget committee. I wrote the initial draft, made it through all the different categories to lay it out, to try to compare more knowledgeably the differences between the three different groups of employees, and this is something that we've been hoping to get done so we can make better informed decisions when it comes time for the budget or through new hires and what have you. So, this is something that the committee has been working on, but has not had time to sit down and review the numbers, to make sure, you know, there's no errors or assumptions that were incorrect. So, before we make a report to the whole council, I'd like for them to have a chance to go over the numbers and then put their heads together and meet, and see if that's, if that is going to be enough definition that they can make informed decisions, you know, that we can share with the rest of the council.
Is this something you feel you guys can do by next month's meeting, regular council meeting?
I think so. We're going to have a trouble. I think the three committee members will, you know, we can't have four people meet, so there's an issue there. I said I would be happy to put the numbers together as best I could with the information Debbie gave me, and then let the committee do their job, again, before giving it to the rest of the council.
I think if you advertised, you could have four of them meet.
Did you hear? As long as you advertise, you can have the four meet.
Forty-eight hour...
That's what Dale did for the budget committee, even though three of us met. He advertised, and the paper wanted to be there, so be it.
Well, you could do that if you advertised.
Okay. Russ is still down as the chair. We could decide a date, we could get together as soon as possible.
We'll get a date scheduled for that, and he should be able to give you something next, with all the work that Shirley's done on this. Should be able to give you something.
It'd be nice to have it going into budget.
Yeah, we'll surely have it for budget time to do it.
Dale.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Dale?
I have received a request from the sheriff who'd like to meet with the budget and finance committee Thursday of next week, which will be June 12th. He has an opening schedule that day, and if both of you guys were able to make room in your schedule for that day.
As we discussed, I'll be out of town that day.
What was that date, Dale?
June 12th.
Well, that's, June 12th is what the sheriff has asked for. I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll call the sheriff and see if we can move that date when you'll be in town.
I'll be in town all week except for that day.
Okay. How does that sound to you, Mark? I'll call him this evening and see if we can move that date, and if we can, we'll set it up for whatever day it falls on. If we can't for any reason, would you rather councilman lobby and I go ahead and meet with him and then fill you in later?
That's fine.
Okay. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you for the reports. Move on to the next topic, which is unfinished business, which I don't believe there is any unfinished business. So, we'll move on to new business. The 2015 probation officer salaries schedule from Jenna Turner?
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know as soon as possible, I just received a copy of the published 2015 minimum salary schedule for probation officers. The salaries are adjusted each year based on the annual pay increase awarded to state judicial employees, and the 2015 schedule reflects a 2% increase. Also wanted to note that the Judicial Center, recognizing that it's creating a significant financial hardship for counties with the minimum salary schedule, the Supreme Court is seeking funding in its budget to reimburse counties for the cost of the salary increases. I did contact the Judicial Center. We're not going to know anything until legislative session, 1st of January. So, I actually have copies of the salary schedule in the email explaining that if you, if you guys want that. Do you just want me to announce it right now, or do you want me to pass these out to you?
Pass them on.
I'd like to have a copy of it, please.
I would too. I think the wage committee would like to have that for comparison.
Right. I just wanted to give you a heads up as soon as possible on that. I will note, though, we have had a reduction in what was approved in our budget for 2014. We had a probation officer retire after 20 years of experience, so she was at the highest pay scale on that schedule, and then I replaced her with a new probation officer who starts at the lowest level of that salary schedule. The difference between those two is $25,884. Well, it'll be less than what was approved to the 2014 budget. In addition to that, I also had a clerical employee resign and replaced her with a new clerical employee who started at the starting salary for clerical, which was a difference of $6,850. So, as far as what was approved in the 2014 budget for the probation department salaries total, there's a difference of $24,097 reduction, as far as that goes. Also, wanted to just give you an update on our detention cost. We did, I did ask for an additional at the very end of last year for detention costs. At this point, we're halfway through. We've used approximately 30% of those costs, which hopefully we can cut some money there. Obviously, with that situation, we really kind of have no control. I can only kind of predict of how things are going to go, but basically, at the halfway point, we're less than 50% of using those detention costs, so I hope to, when I submit the budget, have more detailed information as far as the reduction in probation department budget, and how we've tried to cut costs as much as possible to help relieve the county budget. And really, that's all. I just wanted to give you guys the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jenna?
Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you.
We have no transfers, so we'll move on to additionals. Circuit Court, Paul Prattoni, Judge Butch.
Thank you. I'm here because I wish to transfer an additional, and I'm going to defer to the auditor. She helped me fill this out, as she always does, but the money is actually already present. The fund balance that I'm wanting to transfer from, and it's the Public Defender Fund, not the fund that is the monthly contractual amount, but it is the money that is spent for fees outside the contract, the Class A felonies, things like that. Budget line 1200-30490, followed by seven zeros. I am requesting $15,000. There is in that fund $16,069.52, and that is for the A felony trials that we've had and the disposition of A felony cases through plea agreements. That's why that money has been spent in addition to the monthly contractual amount. So, I have paid, I think, the most recent bill that came in, and so that fund balance is down to zero, so there will be some more bills coming in soon, I'm sure, with regard to some A felony cases, and we have jury trials set every month, four deep, on one week of the month, so I know that we'll be having some more trials coming up. So, anyway, I'm just asking for that transfer. The money is there. That's money that we recover, for instance, from when people post a clerk's bond, a 10% clerk's bond, and I will take that at the disposition of the case, and that money is put in that fund, and it accumulates, and that is, I think, all or the bulk of that comes from that. So, I just need the $15,000 transferred over so I can spend it.
I move to approve the additional.
I have a motion to approve the additional?
I'll second.
Motion to second it? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, have it?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Highway and new equipment, Jay?
Good evening. This is a, this money we're trying to move into the equipment line item is the money that was received from the wrecked truck and plow, and we want to move it in there. We haven't been able to find a replacement truck, but we used the money out of the equipment line item to replace the plow that got tore up on the truck. It took all $6,000 in, and with the age of the truck that was wrecked, we didn't get a lot out of it anyway. I wanted to move this money into equipment so we'd have it there, because we've got to replace two sandboxes for two of the trucks, and I want to make sure everything's ready for next winter, wherever comes in to take over.
Any questions for Jay?
How much snow are we going to have next winter, Jay?
None. I wouldn't even want to guess. If it's anything like this one, you're in trouble.
Sure, yeah. I'll move to approve Jay's requested additional.
We have a motion to approve the additional, the highway department. Do you want to second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, have it? Motion carries. 144s. Health Department's up on, is on deck?
The 144 that I submitted, I'm retiring in September, September 1st, and so I'm requesting training be done at a part-time rate of, what, 842? And that's why I submitted the 144.
Terry, is this to train someone to do your job when you leave?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, has your board chosen someone to take your job yet?
No, no. We'll have to put out resumes, or, you know, we'll put it out till we're, we can get some resumes in, you know, it's possible that a county employee will apply for the job.
It's usually if you retire.
Do I?
Are you retired?
I'm retired, September 1st, yeah. Herb kind of pushed me to retire. So, anyway, next, when I submit our budget for next, for 2015, you're going to be so happy.
I don't think anyone's going to be happy to see you leave, Terry.
Thank you.
You've been there a long time, you know what you're doing.
Long time.
Just for curiosity, how long will it take to train someone, do you think?
Well, I, you know, I submitted this last month, and you wanted to be here, and I'm sorry, I wasn't ready to announce that to my health board yet, that's why I didn't come last night. How many...
Well, we can do, well, to tell you the truth, this isn't going to be an ongoing part-time job. You're just going to be doing it for, just going to be for a couple months, so I think you could work them the hours that you work without.
Right, yeah. I've got a transfer in also, figuring out how many, I think they can only work, what, 28 hours a week?
Well, supposed to be, but if it's just going to be a temporary part-time position, I think...
I'd like to see at least a month, a full month's training be done before somebody, you know, takes over. But of course, it's coming out of my salary. The transfer's coming out of my salary, and then a new salary will have to be set, which I think is about 17.6, something like that.
Yeah, I think yours is a little bit more...
Even if this was going to start tomorrow, it can go past September 1st, right?
17.606 is the start salary.
Yeah, I'd like to see someone in there at least, maybe the very, very end of July through August.
You'd have to add monthly charges.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Thanks for that explanation. We had no idea what this was about last night.
Well, like I say, I wasn't ready to announce it to my, I hadn't talked to my health board yet, which we had a meeting last night. They didn't know about my retirement either, so I just wasn't ready to explain all that. So I just wasn't ready to explain all that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up?
We need to approve that.
I was talking, I was trying to help Jim get out of here.
I'll move, we approve the Health Department's request of 144, for a part-time employee.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Or how long are you going to do this for? Did she say?
She said probably a month, maybe a month and a half, at most. They haven't even advertised her job opening yet.
Do you want to state that as per your motion? The time due up within your motion as far as the time?
I don't feel like I'm in any condition to put.
Set the.
Set the time limit for them, because I don't know when they'll find anyone. But if she's leaving September the 1st, we know that it's not, it can't run past that, and it's going to be paid out of her salary line item.
Then they'll, then they'll go in and be paid the rest of the year out of her line item.
So we should have enough money to cover that.
Yeah, her salary was, was something, I think.
There shouldn't be a problem at the end of the year there, Russ.
She got, she got a lot, she got sick days, and when you, when you balance her out and all that.
Yeah, she'll be paid out for her hot four, her vacation, not sick days. She'll get paid out for sick days. We'll have to do some calculating on that.
My guess is, Russ, we'll be safe there.
She made 3302O, what's her current salary?
Train someone for.
So you're going to have, you start somebody at 17.
Say three pay periods, and then they'll be coming in at the starting salary, which would be a less, lesser amount than Terry currently makes. There'd be, should be enough left in her salary line to finish up the end of the year.
So we're good?
The result, just about.
What I'm concerned with, yeah.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Ayes, ahs. Motion carries. Now, next up, Community Corrections.
The packets that I gave you pertain to a performance bonus that was awarded to Community Corrections from the Indiana Department of Corrections back in March. As explained on the first page there, they had excess funds of $750,000 that were earmarked for Community Corrections, and based upon our site assessment score, which they come down, interview my staff, go through all our hard files, go through the computer files, and they give us a written score on that. And then the interview that I did with them when we presented the grant, we were awarded a $13,815.24 job performance bonus, which is a Level 2. We missed the Level 1 by one point, so, or we would have gotten nearly $21,000. It was a job performance bonus, and as you can see, the following attachments on the following page, the most common use for this is a one-time bonus for staff. And that email was from Mike Lloyd, who is the Director of Community Corrections for the Indiana Department of Corrections. The third page is where I ask if it could be used for that purpose before he sent the other email. Absolutely, you may spend it as you see fit, as long as the funds are spent on Community Corrections, from Debbie Braun, who is my program director, and then Mike went ahead and sent bonuses for staff as an excellent idea. The next page is the actual transfer. We did receive the money in March. It went to the grant, and then we were to transfer it out of the grant into PI, which was done. Our, my advisory board met on April the 28th, and this proposal was presented to them, and they made a motion that the monies be spent for employee bonuses, and it would be calculated at 4.5% of their base pay, and then would be multiplied by their job performance evaluation, which I attached that staff evaluation, I marked the employee's name out. I am required, as a requirement of the grant, to do an evidence-based practice, job performance eval on my direct service staff. And so, like, this person scored an 85, then I took that person's salary, base salary, took 4.5% of that, multiplied it by 85%, and that would be the amount of the bonus that that person would receive. It is to, includes every staff member at Community Corrections, part-time also, and I have more part-time staff than I do full-time, so without, my part-timers are as much a part of my team as my full-time employees. I know you guys did the salary ordinance, and you incorporated that bonus part in there last year. That's not going to apply to us, because my budget is completely different. I don't run until December, mine is July 1 to June 30. It didn't include part-time people. I have 14 part-timers and 10 full-time, including myself. So we worked as a team over there. Without the entire team, we wouldn't have gotten the bonus. Those part-time employees do as much as the full-time, and they were interviewed by DOC personnel also. There's a letter attached from the President of the Advisory Board, where they did make a motion. It passed unanimously, there were no negative votes on that. And the last page, you've already seen, when we went over the part-time salary raises, is that the Advisory Board does set the salaries, salary schedule, and that council duties under Title 36 does not pertain to Community Corrections. So at this time, I'd ask that the 144s be approved. I believe Debbie getting copies of that?
I'd pass that.
Yeah.
I had also, when Michelle first brought this up, I had sent an email to Tammy White, who has been moved up now, she's deputy, deputy director, deputy examiner for State Board of Accounts. And she said that it wouldn't have required council approval, which kind of surprised me, if it was, if Community Corrections was not included in our salary ordinance. But they are included in our salary ordinance, so it does require council approval. And I've talked to other, I've talked to one other county about it, and that was Randolph County. And I think they were, their council, I don't know what their final decision was. I actually, I don't know, they met.
I think it was last, yeah.
Yeah, last night. And I don't know what they ended up deciding on it. But one thing we did discuss is what she said. They need to be, they, if you pass this, then they need to be removed from the, the salary ordinance needs to be amended to remove them from any inclusion in that bonus, and then they would be included with their own bonus if that is what you decide to not.
What we're saying is that we're going to give them a bonus that's not going into the regular salary, is that right? When you say amend the salary ordinance?
Well, we would have to amend.
It's going to be a stipend pay, sort of like a stipend pay?
Well.
We're not going to put it in the salary.
Yes, it would be paid at one, at one time, at once.
So it's going to be like a stipend pay?
Yeah, if you approved it, I guess, probably on their, their salary.
Right, it's a one-time deal.
Yeah, it would be spread out over the remaining salaries.
So we have to change the salary ordinance to give them a stipend pay?
Yeah, yeah, the bonus pay.
And not include them, we proposed for the end of the year.
And then have to amend that salary ordinance, too. Where you had a, you had certain elected officials excluded, you know, from that bonus at the end of how that looked like on the, on the salary ordinance, then you would amend that to include Community Corrections, would not be a part of that portion of.
Only elected officials, only council commissioners?
Council commissioners, I think the coroner and health officer were not included.
Michelle, has the DOC ever done anything like this before?
No, it was the first time. They had the three-quarters of a million excess and decided that this is what they were going to do. The whole evidence-based practices is something new, that they've said for like five years it was coming to prepare. Now, it's mandatory, so they're actually coming down, they're doing audits, doing site assessments to make sure that you're complying with evidence-based practices. The new thing is, it, I have to collaborate, I have to have a written collaboration agreement with probation. She's required by law, and I am, that our departments, they were actually going to try to merge the two departments. They do have one that's on a trial basis now, trying that, and there are several counties that already have merged, but possibly could be in legislation that you are going to. That's still up in the air. But it's already in legislation that by, I think it's January of 2017, we both have to submit in writing our collaborative agreement towards evidence-based practices and services that'll be rendered to vendors.
It's actually coming down the pipeline, the same requirements are going to be into probation also. And I think part of that was collaborating for services, and we aren't necessarily duplicating. So if we had someone on probation that needed a certain type of class, that Community Corrections is already providing, we could refer to Community Corrections rather than having to do it ourselves or go out in the community. So I think it was kind of cost-effective, and we're looking at making sure we weren't duplicating things.
The same drug test fees, I mean, they're going, they're going up all the time. Every time a new drug comes out, they have to do another test, and the cost of the drug test goes up. There's no sense in me having somebody on one of my programs that are on drug testing, and they're also on probation, and her doing it, too, and paying it. We need to be working together to eliminate duplication of services and work together on the services that we're going to provide. And it's going to trickle on down, and when they get finished with probation, it's going down the latter part.
Michelle, is it, is it right to assume that this $750,000 that the DOC had left over, instead of giving it back to every county, they decided to work with the counties and do the best job?
Yes, every county did not.
How many counties?
There was 21 B, Level B counties, and there was a slide presentation, and I went ahead on the internet and printed it there. There was 19 Level A counties, 21 Level B counties, and nine Level C counties. The rest were D and E counties, and they didn't get anything. The top, the Level A, B, and C was awarded funds.
So all 92 counties were, yeah?
Every, every county that has a Community Corrections, yes, had the site assessments, grant review hearings, but there was only, what, around 50 counties that got any type of award at all. And it ranged from six, like 6,900 to almost 21,000. We were in the middle. We missed the top one by one point.
One point. Now, Randolph, you said got some, was there any other county around this county?
No, Randolph was the only other county around us that got any money. I did have the President of the Indiana Community Corrections Act county send a mass email to all the directors to ask what they were doing with it, and if anybody was paying bonuses, how they were doing it. I didn't get two responses, and I shared those emails with Debbie. I didn't get two responses that were the same. Several of them said they did go get a salary ordinance amended. There was some that paid it out as a 400 series, which is a capital line, property and vehicles, equipment. I don't know how they did that. And there was others that told me they just filed a claim in that person's name and paid it out, no W-2, no tab. And my concern was, and I got with Debbie immediately, is, you know, we want to do it, but I want to make sure it's done right, as well as Debbie. You know, that's why she contacted State Board of Accounts.
So this will show up on everyone's 1099?
It'll show up on their W-2s.
W-2, I was thinking the wrong one.
And the, the amounts.
Make sure it's not few.
I have calculated, covers perf, perf is covered, there's enough funds to cover perf, the Social Security, Medicare, all the taxes are covered, and there's like $42.79 left over that'll just stay in project income.
Okay, so that was my question, because there was $13,815 you got over here at the salaries, it doesn't add up, should you cover it all that stuff?
Yes, all the bases were covered as far as perf and taxes.
So when we get ready to make a motion, it has to be that we amend the salary ordinance to remove them from the bonus plan that we got currently in place, to give them their own, put them on their own bonus plan, if that's what you want to do. Or if you don't want to do it, then just make a motion to deny it. Then we'd have to sign the amendment, the amended salary ordinance next month, and Debbie gets it cut out.
Well, if we don't do it, then we'll, we just send the money back to the state.
I'll give you Dale's address.
No, the money stays, but I would, I'm, I will push the matter. State law is behind me, the state of Indiana is behind me, and I'm standing behind my staff.
And your advisory board has already hashed this out?
Exactly, and it passed unanimously.
Now Debbie, when we change this salary ordinance, now will we have to come back and change it again?
What do you mean?
When we change it to pay this bonus, will we kind of have to come back and change the salary ordinance again, or not?
Well, you just have a new salary ordinance next year, and you're going to do the base pay. This is just going to, this is just going to specify bonus pay for this year.
Just to finish out this year, right?
Yeah.
So if they qualify for the bonus, they'll get a double bonus?
No, they're, she's going to remove this.
Right, so I'm just telling them.
What she's included in, and she just changed their salaries to include the bonus, but I wanted you guys to see what it actually was, so her and I sat down, and I wrote this in, to put what the bonuses were. And then, like this bonus down here, under the part-time, there are eight facility officers that will be sharing a bonus of $1,298.84. And then the same, there are four CSR officers that'll be sharing that $446.65, and two case managers will share $611.
I would add that I want that advisory board, and there was a discussion that basically you're rewarding them for a job well done, in, in addition to incentive to do better, because they still could have gone up another level. And if they have that money available, it's not guaranteed, but it would give them more incentive to, motivation to do an even better job, although they're already doing a great job just on their own.
Is that your department? Who are you talking about?
Community Corrections, I'm too.
I haven't heard you say that about your, I haven't heard you say that about your department.
They're not qualified, they're not going to give us a bonus. We're making our good work.
Jenna is the Vice President of our. Jenna is the Vice President of our, of the Advisory Board for Community Corrections.
No, good.
No, baby. Judicial Center recognizes that mine for us.
Let's make the motion. We asked, we got to make a motion to change the salary ordinance. Is that right?
And to.
Amend it?
And to approve the 144.
And to approve the 144.
Okay. I'll make that motion now. We amend that salary ordinance.
Do a second?
No, second.
So we have a motion on the floor to amend the current salary ordinance as stated, and to approve the 144. Do you have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, ahs, ahs. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I know my staff is greatly going to appreciate it.
Hurry up, Community Corrections, buddy, not even.
Do you have any patron concerns? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Is there any further discussion from the council? I'm going to drag this thing out for Jim. If there's any, if there's not, I'll entertain a motion for German.
Come on, Jim.
I'm ready. I'll make it.
I'll move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, mean adjourn.